Ms. Vassil, here. Mr. Van Scheren, here. Mrs. Winarski, here.
Here.
Mr. Miller.
President.
Mr. Janik.
Here. Stand for the prayer by Chuck and myself. You remain standing for the pledge of the flag by Sergeant and Arms Book of Act.
We abolish this plea. Gracious God, bless this meeting tonight. We pray a special blessing upon our security and safety forces across the state of Ohio. Keep them safe. We pray that our police officers here in Amherst are kept safe as they assure our safety. And keep us all within your care. And now may the words of our mouths and the meditations of our hearts be acceptable in your sight of our rock and our redeemer. Amen.
Commander.
My pledge of the flag to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Move on to item four, the consent agenda.
Minutes of the regular council meeting held November 14th, 2016. Minutes of the executive session held November 14th, 2016. Minutes of the finance committee meeting held November 21st, 2016. Minutes of the building and lands committee meeting held November 21st, 2016. Minutes of the community development committee meetings held November 21st, 2016. And minutes of the police fire committee meetings held November 21st, 2016.
Mr. Miller.
Move to accept consent agenda as read.
Mr. Van Scheren.
Second that.
Motion second on the floor to accept the consent agenda as read. Are there any comments? Roll call vote please.
Mr. Book of Act.
Yes.
Mr. Goodell.
Yes.
Mr. Van Scheren.
Yes.
Mrs. Vassil.
Yes.
Mr. Winarski.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Janik.
Yes.
Completes item four. Move on to item five and now to the public pertaining items on tonight's agenda. Anyone here wishing to speak on anything that is on tonight's agenda? Yes, sir. Would you go to the podium, sir, and state your name?
Certainly. I am Robert Ellis with the concern your hands up. At the committee meeting a week ago, I spoke at length concerning the historic preservation area and the other items. And I've responded to correspondence from the school board as well. I have no further comments. However, I will be available. Mr. Winarski is here if anyone has any questions. I'd like to collect your pictures.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Ellis. I would like to recognize Sam. He's here to get his merit badge from Boy Scouts. Thank you, Sam, for coming. That completes item five. Move on to item six, ordinances and resolutions. First reading, item A.
An ordinance to increase appropriations and fund 100 and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Goodell.
I'd like to suspend council rules so item six A may be passed on its first reading with the emergency.
Mr. Winarski.
I'll second that.
Motion second on the floor to suspend council rules on item A so may be passed on the first reading. Any comments? Roll call vote please.
Mr. Book of Act.
Yes.
Mr. Goodell.
Yes.
Mr. Van Scheren.
Yes.
Mrs. Vassil.
Yes.
Mr. Winarski.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Janik.
Yes.
Motion carries. Mr. Miller.
Move to adopt.
Mr. Van Scheren.
Second that.
Motion second on the floor to adopt. Roll call vote.
Mr. Book of Act.
Yes.
Mr. Goodell.
Yes.
Mr. Van Scheren.
Yes.
Mrs. Vassil.
Yes.
Mr. Winarski.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Janik.
Motion carries.
Ordinance O-16-41.
Item B.
An ordinance reappropriating funds in fire and police accounts and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Goodell.
I'd like to make a motion to suspend council rules so item six B may be passed on its first reading with the emergency.
Thank you, Mr. Janik. Motion second on the floor to suspend council rules on item B so may be passed on the first reading. Any comments? Roll call vote please.
Mr. Book of Act.
Yes.
Mr. Goodell.
Yes.
Mr. Van Scheren.
Yes.
Mrs. Vassil.
Yes.
Mr. Winarski.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Janik.
Yes.
Motion carries. Mr. Winarski.
Motion to adopt.
Mr. Goodell.
Second.
Motion second on the floor to adopt. Roll call vote.
Mr. Book of Act.
Yes.
Mr. Goodell.
Yes.
Mr. Van Scheren.
Yes.
Mrs. Vassil.
Yes.
Mr. Winarski.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Janik.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Ordinance O-16-42.
Item C.
An ordinance reappropriating funds in various accounts and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Goodell.
I'd like to make motion to suspend council rules so item six C may be passed on its first reading with the emergency.
Thank you. Mr. Janik.
Second.
Motion second on the floor to suspend council rules on item C so may be passed on the first reading. Any comments? Roll call vote.
Mr. Book of Act.
Yes.
Mr. Goodell.
Yes.
Mr. Van Scheren.
Yes.
Mrs. Vassil.
Yes.
Mr. Winarski.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Janik.
Yes.
Motion carries. Mr. Miller.
Move to adopt, please.
Mr. Goodell.
Second.
Motion second on the floor to adopt. Roll call vote.
Mr. Book of Act.
Yes.
Mr. Goodell.
Yes.
Mr. Van Scheren.
Yes.
Mrs. Vassil.
Yes.
Mr. Winarski.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Janik.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Ordinance O-16-43.
Item D.
An ordinance to increase appropriations and fund 100 and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Janik.
I'd like to suspend council rules so that item six B may be passed on its first reading.
Mr. Miller.
Second, please.
Motion second on the floor to suspend council rules on item D so may be passed on the first reading. Any comments? Roll call vote please.
Mr. Book of Act.
Yes.
Mr. Goodell.
Yes.
Mr. Van Scheren.
Yes.
Mrs. Vassil.
Yes.
Mr. Winarski.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Janik.
Yes.
Motion carries. Mr. Goodell.
Move to adopt.
Mr. Janik.
Second.
Motion second on the floor to adopt. Roll call vote.
Mr. Book of Act.
Yes.
Mr. Goodell.
Yes.
Mr. Van Scheren.
Yes.
Mrs. Vassil.
Yes.
Mr. Winarski.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Janik.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Ordinance 16-44.
Item E.
An ordinance consenting to adopt bridge inspection services for 2017, '18, '19, declaring an emergency.
Mr. Goodell.
I'd like to suspend council -- make a motion to suspend council rules so item six E may be passed on its first reading with the emergency.
Mr. Winarski. I'll second.
Motion second on the floor to suspend council rules so item E may be passed on the first reading. Any comments? Mr. Miller.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just got excited when I saw bridge inspection. I was hoping that we'd see these railroad bridges inspected and upgraded, but I'm happy to see that the state of Ohio is going to pay for the bridge inspection in the city of Amherst. So thank you for the mayor and the city for working that out. With that, I have no further comments.
Thank you. Motion second on the floor. Moves to suspension. Roll call vote please.
Mr. Book of Act.
Yes.
Mr. Goodell.
Yes.
Mr. Van Scheren.
Yes.
Mrs. Vassil.
Yes.
Mr. Winarski.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Janik.
Yes.
Motion carries. Mr. Miller.
Move to adopt, please.
Mr. Janik.
Second.
Motion second on the floor to adopt. Roll call vote.
Mr. Book of Act.
Yes.
Mr. Goodell.
Yes.
Mr. Van Scheren.
Yes.
Mrs. Vassil.
Yes.
Mr. Winarski.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Janik.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Ordinance O-16-45.
Item F.
An ordinance to establish the salary and benefits of the superintendents of utilities and of the water pollution control center supervisors of the electric sewer, street, water, and water pollution control center repealing all ordinances in conflict herewith and declaring an emergency.
I have another question. Do you have a different -- I have --
Just a point of order.
Oh, okay.
Well, just for clarification to the -- I spoke with the president of council earlier. Item F and item K will be combined in one ordinance because we're creating the deputy position, deputy treasurer position as a non-bargaining full-time position. We already have an ordinance dealing with that. That would have been A, A-1661 from last week's committee meeting. So we combine A, A-1661 and A-1656 together in the one ordinance. They're all the same.
Do we need a motion for that or?
No. No.
You will have to read F and kill that.
Right. Right.
Go ahead.
An ordinance to establish the salary and benefits of the deputy treasurer repealing all ordinances in conflict herewith and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Goodell.
I'd like to make motion to kill item F as it has been combined with item K.
Thank you. Mr. Miller.
Second, please.
Motion second on the floor to kill item F because it has been added on to item K because she is full-time. Any other questions? Roll call vote please.
Mr. Book of Act.
Yes.
Mr. Goodell.
Yes.
Mr. Van Scheren.
Yes.
Mrs. Vassil.
Yes.
Mr. Winarski.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Janik.
Yes.
Motion carries. Item G.
An ordinance to establish the salary and benefits of the superintendents of utilities and of the water pollution control center supervisors of the electric sewer, street, water, and water pollution control center repealing all ordinances in conflict herewith and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Goodell.
I'd like to make a motion to suspend council rules so item six G may be passed on its first reading with the emergency.
Mr. Janik.
Second.
Motion second on the floor to suspend council rules. Item G so may be passed on the first reading. Any comments? Mr. Winarski.
Thank you, Mr. President. Last week, I briefly spoke on this topic, and I'd like to revisit it very briefly here, if I may. Within this group and item G are traditional employees that are supervisors, and then there's the supervisors that are under retire, rehire program. When I spoke last week, I was looking for what are the benefits? And one of the things the mayor's pointed out to me is that you can have a person retire with seven weeks of vacation and come back and only accept one week. And what was the dollar amount associated with it? There's significance.
I think with that and the longevity benefit, which is so much per year added per month. I think it's a $9.850 or something. It adds up. It's eight or $9,000 per employee that the city saves minimum just with those two items alone.
With those findings, I've also had the opportunity to speak to other communities that offer retire, rehire opers, our own Gwen in our tech or auditor's department. There may be some other opportunities, but we're not at the point yet where I'm able to bring those to council as an ordinance. But I have a hunch we will be soon. But anytime you're relying on someone else's information and assistance, I can never commit a time. So I guess the question I have is these contracts that we're offering here under item G, these are three-year contracts, correct?
Yes.
What's your opinion on modifying any of those to one-year contracts so we can revisit if we do have an ordinance or just walk me through this? What do you think?
I'll be honest, I don't know the legalities of that. I mean, it's not a union, so I'm sure there's not as many rules that way. But I mean, that's the first I've heard or thought of that, so I'm unable to answer.
And I realize we have a motion and a second, but I'm just exploring. And I guess with that, I also felt an obligation to follow up with this, and we're in the midst of looking at it, but.
What would be the purpose for keeping it to one year instead of three?
I have a hunch after -- as I continue exploring this, there may be some opportunities for the city to save money and these retire, rehire employees to be -- to sign a modified contract that would not impact them. I believe we can craft an ordinance right now where the benefits that they receive would come through opers and that would, you know, cost us less in the long run. I have a hunch, but I can't -- you see, what's troubling to me, once again, is I'm depending on other people for this information, and I'd like to say I'm going to have it in six months, but I can't guarantee that. I'd like to revisit it when it's available, but I want to know what we're on the hook for here when we sign or when we agreed to number letter G. And that's three years? Is there an opportunity to revisit with the employees or?
You know, and I wasn't part of the administration that rehired. I mean, I was safety service director, but I would assume these people were led to believe they were going to have city benefits when they came back. And I don't know what the opers benefits are and how they compare to what we receive. I mean, there's so little information and I don't have -- again, I can't give you an answer on that. I assume these people are expecting three-year contracts.
Opers has some other programs, and I think I need to talk to Chuck about those, and I'll talk to you about them. But there's some other opportunities for hospitalization and so forth that it's just a totally different package that I've been checking on. So I kind of should have probably talked to you beforehand, but I.
I mean, if it's three years, it's three years. That's fine.
And when you can revisit, I mean, we can -- I can give you a commitment to look at this before we let somebody retire and hire them in the future. But again, you know, I hate to impact somebody's life on a spur like this without knowing more information. I mean, they're expecting a three-year contract, and I wouldn't be ready to do anything different.
Okay. And I've always promised you that I would be upfront with the -- I've been investigating this and looking at it, and I'll continue to do so.
I appreciate that.
I owe you the opportunity to give me your opinion, and I appreciate it. We have a motion and a second with that, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Rooker.
Yeah, Chuck did contact my office, and one night did talk about it. Did talk to PERS. You do have to offer a retiree rehire. You have to offer them the PERS investment plan. However, council would have to pass an ordinance not offering them the health benefits, then they would have to go back to PERS and seek benefits through them. Want to understand, it's a little bit higher cost for the employee to go back to PERS and buy those benefits. I think the reason why they do the three years is mostly for budget. This way, we know where we're at with our salary increases, our health benefits. PERS will know, okay, next in '17 is 2 percent, and '18 is 2 percent, and '19 is one and a half. And I think that was the reason, plus also because the union contracts were just seamless to -- since the unions were getting these raises for all the non-bargainings and the superintendents and captains and chief and all that, it's just easier to roll that -- those benefits over as well. I hope that helps.
Thank you, Mr. Otter.
Also, I think we passed an ordinance a couple of years ago that said that we would pass the same benefits on that the bargaining got to the non-bargaining.
I think we did do that, yeah.
No, there's an ordinance on the books, so if I remember correctly. I don't remember which one it was, but we have one. Mr. Miller.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I, like Chuck, have some concerns here because I can see some cost savings for the city and opportunities as well. We have right now, I believe, a three-year contract that starts for all supervisors and contract labor, which will start in '17. Is that correct? So this right here is, I don't think fair for our employees to pull that this close to the day. We're heading into the new year rather soon. However, I would, like Chuck, like to see us put in ordinance some changes. And I think that once you hit that retirement, I think we should turn over our healthcare benefits by ordinance over to the retirement system. If we choose to bring them back, I think we should consider bringing them back at a either a possible lower amount, the base entry level for that position. Because what we would be neglecting to do is to take the next qualified person in that department and put them into that position. And that opens up a spot below that, which opens -- could possibly open up another, which means we're bringing in another member of that department at a lower salary, lower benefits. And I think that that right there would, by giving opportunity for the next person within the department to move up. So I think there's some cost savings, and I think Chuck's on to something there. I also don't agree with giving a three-year contract to retire, hire, retire, retire, hire. I just, I don't, I don't think that's honestly good for morale. I'm not a big fan of that. I believe that on a one-year, and let's see where the city, the direction the city's going. If we have a contract that goes out and we have a new mayor come in, they're stuck for three years with a retiree hire, when they may want to go a different direction. So I think this is, there's some cost savings that can be found for the city here. I think that there's some other benefits. And that benefit analysis, I was hoping to hear something too from the last meeting, which I didn't. So I'm going off of my research, and I think that there's, this is something we definitely, Chuck, and the rest of us at council need to do is to sit down and look at possibly amending this ordinance. But by no means should we disrupt our commitments that we've given our employees, our supervisors. We have a real good staff. We have really good supervisors from what I've dealt with on the outside looking in. By no means is my comments meant to take away from their contributions or their abilities. I just think that we tie our hands a little bit by rolling in a three-year contract and rolling in those benefits without options. I think that our, the city needs to keep an eye on keeping our costs as low as possible as well. And I think if we can do that here and this side of the room, then I think we should at least take a look at them. So with that, I yield back my time. I have no more questions or comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Roll call vote please.
Mr. Book of Act.
Yes.
Mr. Goodell.
Yes.
Mr. Van Scheren.
Yes.
Mrs. Vassil.
Yes.
Mr. Winarski.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Janik.
Yes.
Motion carries. Seven to four. Ms. Vassil.
Move to adopt.
Mr. Van Scheren.
Second.
Motion second on the floor to adopt. Roll call vote.
Mr. Book of Act.
Yes.
Mr. Goodell.
Yes.
Mr. Van Scheren.
Yes.
Mrs. Vassil.
Yes.
Mr. Winarski.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Janik.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Ordinance O-16-46.
Item H.
An ordinance to establish the salary and benefits of the director of the Office on Aging of the City of Amherst repealing all ordinances in conflict herewith and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Van Scheren.
Suspend council rules so item H can be passed on its first reading.
Thank you, Mr. Janik.
Second.
Motion second on the floor to suspend council rules so item H may be passed on the first reading. Any comments? Roll call vote please.
Mr. Book of Act.
Yes.
Mr. Goodell.
Yes.
Mr. Van Scheren.
Yes.
Mrs. Vassil.
Yes.
Mr. Winarski.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Janik.
Yes.
Motion carries. Mr. Book of Act.
Move to adopt.
Mr. Goodell.
Second.
Motion second on the floor to adopt. Roll call vote.
Mr. Book of Act.
Yes.
Mr. Goodell.
Yes.
Mr. Van Scheren. Mrs. Vassil.
Yes.
Mr. Winarski.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Janik.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Ordinance O-16-47.
Item I.
An ordinance to establish the salary terms and other conditions of the fire chief of the city of Amherst repealing all ordinances in conflict herewith and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Miller. Mr. Bukavak.
Yes.
Mr. Goodell.
Yes.
Mr. Van Churen.
Yes.
Mrs. Vasil.
Yes.
Mr. Winarsky.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Janik.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Ordinance O-16-48.
Item J.
An ordinance to establish the salaries, terms, and other conditions of employment for the chief and lieutenants of the Police Department of the City of Amherst, repealing all ordinances in conflict here with and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Bukavak.
Thank you. Motion to suspend council rules so item J may be passed on its first reading with the emergency.
Mr. Goodell. I'd like to make a motion to suspend council rules so item 6K may be passed on its first reading with the emergency.
Thank you. Mr. Bukavak.
Second.
Motion second on the floor to suspend council rules so item J so it may be passed on the first reading. Any comments? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Bukavak.
Yes.
Mr. Goodell.
Yes.
Mr. Van Churen.
Yes.
Mrs. Vasil.
Yes.
Mr. Winarsky.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Janik.
Yes.
Motion carries.
It's ordinance O-16-48.
Item J.
An ordinance to establish the salaries, terms, and other conditions of employment for the chief and lieutenants of the Police Department of the City of Amherst, repealing all ordinances in conflict here with and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Bukavak.
Thank you. Motion to suspend council rules so item J may be passed on its first reading. Mr. Goodell.
Second.
Motion second on the floor to suspend council rules so item J so it may be passed on the first reading. Any comments? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Bukavak.
Yes.
Mr. Goodell.
Yes.
Mr. Van Churen.
Yes.
Mrs. Vasil.
Yes.
Mr. Winarsky.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Janik.
Yes.
Motion carries.
It's ordinance O-16-51.
Item K.
An ordinance to establish the salary and benefits of certain full-time, non-bargaining unit employees of the City of Amherst, repealing all ordinances in conflict here with and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Goodell.
I'd like to make a motion to suspend council rules so item 6K may be passed on its first reading with the emergency.
Thank you. Mr. Bukavak.
Second.
Motion second on the floor to suspend council rules so item K so it may be passed on the first reading. Any comments? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Bukavak.
Yes.
Mr. Goodell.
Yes.
Mr. Van Churen.
Yes.
Mrs. Vasil.
Yes.
Mr. Winarsky.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Janik.
Yes.
Motion carries. Mr. Van Churen.
Move to adopt.
Mr. Janik.
Second.
Motion second on the floor to suspend council rules. Roll call vote.
Mr. Bukavak.
Yes.
Mr. Goodell.
Yes.
Mr. Van Churen.
Yes.
Mrs. Vasil.
Yes.
Mr. Winarsky.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Janik.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Ordinance O-16-48.
Item J.
An ordinance to establish the salaries, terms, and other conditions of employment for the chief and lieutenants of the Police Department of the City of Amherst, repealing all ordinances in conflict here with and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Goodell.
I'd like to make a motion to suspend council rules so item 6K may be passed on its first reading with the emergency.
Thank you. Mr. Bukavak.
Second.
Motion second on the floor to suspend council rules so item K so it may be passed on the first reading. Any comments? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Bukavak.
Yes.
Mr. Goodell.
Yes.
Mr. Van Churen.
Yes.
Mrs. Vasil.
Yes.
Mr. Winarsky.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Janik.
Yes.
Motion carries. Mr. Bukavak.
Move to adopt.
Mr. Goodell.
Second.
Motion second on the floor to suspend council rules so item K so it may be passed on the first reading. Any comments? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Bukavak.
Yes.
Mr. Goodell.
Yes.
Mr. Van Churen.
Yes.
Mrs. Vasil.
Yes.
Mr. Winarsky.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Janik.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Ordinance O-16-50.
Item L.
A resolution implementing section 3735.65 through 3735.70 over the Ohio Revised Code, establishing and describing the boundaries of a historic preservation district in the City of Amherst, Ohio, designating a housing officer to administer the program, and creating a housing council and a tax incentive review council, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Goodell.
I'd like to make a motion to suspend council rules so item 6L may be passed on its first reading with the emergency.
Thank you. Mr. Winarsky.
I'll second that, and I'd like to comment, please.
No.
Please.
Motion second on the floor to suspend council rules so item L may be passed on the first reading. Roll call vote, please.
I have to take a moment here and say, I cringed when I read this initially, and I saw the numbers ORC 3735. That's associated with a nasty little program that's northeast of us. With that in mind, I visited the school administration, spent a lot of time on the phone with them, dragged some council members into my concerns. After sitting down for an extended period of time this morning, we tore this thing apart. We looked at the valuation of every building that's in this expanded, or I use expanded because it's more than just Central School and the City Hall. We could not find any instance in here that would negatively impact the schools. We looked at it from two angles. Would it impact incoming income or revenue? Would it put kids into the system that were not being paid for? In both instances, we came back with no. What really sold this to the schools and myself is, is in section four, just past letter E. It's the final paragraph of section four, and it thoroughly and very nicely explains tip of the cap to whoever wrote this, how the abatements will be handled. I'm sorry, they're not abatements, they're tax concessions, or tax considerations, but it's crafted in a manner that does not impact the schools. I didn't know that was possible, but honestly, we tore this thing apart. And once again, I repeat myself, I know, but I really want to stress, the schools, the person I sat down with the schools and I, could find nothing in here that negatively impacts the schools. And for that, I applaud everyone who was involved with writing this. Well done. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Van Churen. Mr. Miller.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just have two, a question and a comment, but I'll go with the question first. Can I get a history, or at least an explanation of how this district was created and by whom?
We worked together. I mean, so Mr. Ellis could probably comment. We wanted to benefit a couple of historic buildings within our area, but Mr. Ellis might be able to describe that.
Yes, please, Mr. Ellis.
We had several meetings with the mayor and representatives of the school board, and of course, the goal was to have the Central School and the City Hall. And the thought was to have a, and the people in Columbus, the Ohio Department of Administrative Services, that hasn't verified we comply, he suggested that it be contiguous. So what we did was choose the sort of smallest area that would be contiguous. We just sort of went up north from Central School between main and church and Franklin, up to the corner up here, and across to the city hall. And we felt that was a good balance between being too small and yet overly large. And of course, council would have the ability to change that at some point in the future if there were any problems, because expecting that. So I guess, going to human being, I was kind of the one that sort of drew that, and then we circulated that map above, well, Mr. Cora, the mayor, everybody had seen that. And so I guess I was the one who drew the lines on the map, but it was based on discussions that we had with the schools and the administration. My...
Yeah, I guess so that means mayor, you said everyone, and I was wondering who everyone was that you brought in on this.
Oh, well, I don't think it's any secret. there when we met. And of course, the school board's council, Sarah Moore. And there may have been some other folks that participated. My partner, Marshall Connet, was involved.
The, and the reason I was asking, there's some opportunities that looks like through this, this new historic preservation district that we could have kept continuous. I would have liked to see the Braun and the Spring down there behind us brought in on that as well. That would have been, I think, an area that we could have wrapped into this district, this drawn district to bring about some benefits as well. And that, that would have been nice to have that submitted the first time and get approved by the state. I mean, this is not something that sounds to me like you just mail in and like a rebate for something. You have to go through many stages. So with that being the case, I would have liked to see a couple other thoughts come in on that, maybe possibly opening that up to bring in the Braun property, that Spring and that area. There's, there's some contiguous areas that could have been added, so.
I assume you don't disagree in terms of council has the option to expand that. And it's not that tough of a deal, so it certainly could be done. We were, there were other, other people on school board and others who were concerned that it was too big. And so we were kind of trying to reach some kind of compromise on that. But we can certainly, certainly, council could at some point add that. It wouldn't be that much of a problem. We could go through to your ordinance committee for this process. And, you know, I'm not sure, I'd have to consult with Mr. Cora, but I'm not even, I don't think we'd have to go down to the Department of Development Services for that kind of a change. That would be looked into. My point is, is that it wouldn't be that tough to do.
Well, good. That's good, good to hear. Well, thank you. That answered that question.
Sure.
And then the, the only other, and I think this district is under this right now, this actual motion, so one of the things that falls under here are some tax credits and some opportunities for Springer to, to be able to revitalize a very old building. And that is, we're happy to see that. I think many people here, not, not just those like Mr. Bukavak and myself who went to Central School, but others who live here, we like to see that, the investment, we appreciate the investment by Springer. For me, I have a hard time giving up so much opportunity for the city and for the school districts and for the people when it comes to an investment like that. If you're going to put seven million in, that's seven million that goes into that education pot that would actually lower property taxes for some, those who are paying school taxes. That would, and it may not be that much, but, you know, everybody's asking us to come here and do what we can to keep taxes as low as possible. Giving these abatements, I also hope and requested and would love to see the, the Springer contract, local as much as possible labor, pay that prevailing wage, and keep people working in the area with this. So if we're to give this abatement and allow the investment not to be taxed, pulling the permits, I think is a really good start to show that going through the city for the permits. And then hopefully, the design builder is going to consider and utilize as much local prevailing wage labor that they can. If it wasn't such a big and vital company, a company like Springer and Nordson and some of the others that have done so much over the years to invest, and you can see on Lake Street, they're putting back in, in the Amherst manner, they're constantly investing back in, in Amherst. I've been around now with Chuck and others, watching Springer invest back in the school district, invest back in the city, invest back into the local community, and this makes it easier for me to sign off on this because of what Springer's done. And so I want to kind of throw that in there as a thank you for all that you've done to, to be a part of this community, and with that, I, it makes us easier to accept and to support and get behind, and you have my full support and I'm behind it. Still, I'd love to see that map drawn a little bit differently, but hey, this is a great start, and it brings in this building, and there's a lot of thoughts there as well. So thank you for answering my questions. Thank you for coming up here and taking the time over committee and then this reading as well. With that, Mr. President, I thank you for the time.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Bukavak.
Yes.
Mr. Goodell.
Yes.
Mr. Van Churen.
Yes.
Mrs. Vasil.
Yes.
Mr. Winarsky.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Janik.
Yes.
Motion carries.
It's resolution R-16-10.
Item M.
An ordinance amending ordinance number O-15-18 to correct an error in exhibit A-1 of that ordinance and declaring an emergency.
Is it 15-20?
I've got 20, yeah.
I don't know, does 20 know?
What's the question?
On the agenda.
You've got O-15-20 on the agenda and O-15-18 on the ordinance.
Let me explain you. I suppose I should. Again, for the Springers, council graciously vacated a little part of the Russell Drive, and that was pursuant to the ordinance 15-18.
I see.
And then there, in that ordinance, the surveyor had provided the wrong name for the owner.
Right.
Right, exactly. Remember, and so we had an amendment which was O-15-20, which corrected that. Then it was discovered that the surveyor made yet another mistake with the tax map people. There was a, on one of the bearings on the legal description, it should have been 32, and he put in 23. And so the tax map people, I begged them, you're going to have to go through this, but he said, no, no, we want to have another formal amendment. And so that's why I prepared the ordinance, which is before us now, that would correct 18-20 to make the right, you know, verify the right name and also correct the bearing. Actually, the legal description was correct, but yet the little map surveyor did get that wrong. So really, what we're doing is substituting the map that should have been attached on 18, and so we're substituting that now as it had been there in the first place.
So is 18, correct?
So this is correct? Yeah.
18 is correct?
This is, yeah, yours is written as correct.
So as I read it, it's correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Janik.
I'd like to move to suspend council rules so that item 6N can be passed on its first reading, please.
Thank you. Mr. Goodell.
Second.
Motion section four, suspend council rules, item M may be passed on the first reading. Any other comments? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Bukavak.
Yes.
Mr. Goodell.
Yes.
Mr. Van Churen.
Yes.
Mrs. Vasil.
Yes.
Mr. Winarsky.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mrs. Janik.
Yes.
Motion carries. Mr. Miller.
Move to adopt.
Mr. Goodell.
Second.
Motion second on the floor to suspend council rules, item M may be passed on the first reading. Any other comments? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Bukavak.
Yes.
Mr. Goodell.
Yes.
Mr. Van Churen.
Yes.
Mrs. Vasil.
Yes.
Mr. Winarsky.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Janik.
Yes.
Motion carries. Mr. Miller.
Move to adopt.
Mr. Goodell.
Second.
Motion second on the floor to suspend council rules, item M may be passed on the first reading. Any other comments? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Bukavak.
Yes.
Mr. Goodell.
Yes.
Mr. Van Churen.
Yes.
Mrs. Vasil.
Yes.
Mr. Winarsky.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Janik.
Yes.
Motion carries. Mr. Miller.
Move to adopt.
Mr. Goodell.
Motion second on the floor to suspend council rules.
Roll call vote.
Mr. Bukavak.
Yes.
Mr. Goodell.
Yes.
Mr. Van Churen.
Yes.
Mrs. Vasil.
Yes.
Mr. Winarsky.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Janik.
Yes.
Motion carries.
It's resolution O-16-51.
61.
61.
I'm sorry. 61.
51.
52.
Yeah. Item N.
A resolution requesting that the county auditor of Lorraine County pursuant to Ohio Revised Code, section 5705.03B, certify to the City of Amherst the total current tax valuation of the city and the dollar amount of revenue that would be generated by one mil for the purpose of providing and maintaining fire apparatus, appliances, buildings, or sites, therefore, for the Fire Department of the City of Amherst pursuant to section 5705.19I of the Ohio Revised Code and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Van Churen.
I'd like to suspend council rules so item 6N can be passed now.
Thank you. Mr. Bukavak.
I'd like to second a comment, please. Oh, thank you. We are, this item and the next item are both tied together a little bit, and we are blessed in this community to be having some of the finest safety services in the county, as well as this provides them with the equipment not only to do their job well, but also to do their job very safely. And I think this is a great thing that we're able to provide for them, and it's a proud to actually provide this and put this forward to the city and to the residents, so thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Winarsky.
Thank you. What month were you planning on putting this? Were we going to go in May?
We were the first election, the next coming election.
Okay. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Bukavak.
Yes.
Mr. Goodell.
Yes.
Mr. Van Churen.
Yes.
Mrs. Vasil.
Yes.
Mr. Winarsky.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Janik.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Resolution R-16-11.
Item O.
A resolution pursuant to Ohio Revised Code, section 5705.19, submitting to the electors of the City of Amherst the question of a renal levy for a period of five years for the purpose of providing and maintaining fire apparatus, appliances, buildings, or sites, therefore, for the Fire Department of the City of Amherst, Ohio, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Miller.
Move to suspend council rules so 6O can be passed on with emergency.
have liked to see the Braun and the Spring down there behind us brought in on that as well, that would have been, I think, an area that we could have wrapped into this district, this drawn district to bring about some benefits as well, and that would have been nice to have that submitted the first time, and get approved by the state, I mean, this is not something that sounds to me like you just mail in and like a rebate for something, you have to go through many stages, so, with that being the case, I would have liked to seen a couple other thoughts come in on that, maybe possibly opening that up to bring in the Braun property, that Spring and that area, there's some contiguous areas that could have been added, so.
I certainly don't disagree, and of course, council has the option to expand that, and it's not that tough of a deal, so it certainly could be done. We were, there were other people on school board and others who were concerned that it was too big, and so we were kind of trying to reach some kind of compromise on that, but we could certainly, certainly, council could at some point add that, it wouldn't be that much of a problem, we could go through to your ordinance committee, this process, and, you know, I'm not sure, I'd have to consult with Mr. Cora, but I'm not even, I don't think we'd have to go down to the Department of Development Services for that kind of a change, that would be looked into, my point is, is that it wouldn't be that tough to do.
Well, good, that's good to hear. Well, thank you, that answered that question. And then the, the only other, and I think this district is under this right now, this actual motion, so, one of the things that falls under here are some tax credits and some opportunities for Springer to be able to revitalize a very old building, and that is, we're happy to see that, I think many people here, not just those like Mr. Bukavak and myself who went to Central School, but others who live here, we like to see that, the investment, we appreciate the investment by Springer. For me, I have a hard time giving up so much opportunity for the city and for the school districts, and for the people when it comes to an investment like that, if you're going to put seven million in, that's seven million that goes into that education pot, that would actually lower property taxes for some, those that are paying school taxes, that would, and it may not be that much, but, you know, everybody's asking us to come here and do what we can to keep taxes as low as possible. Giving these abatements, I also hope and requested and would love to see that Springer contract, local, as much as possible labor, pay that prevailing wage, and keep people working in the area with this, so, if we're to give this abatement and allow the investment not to be taxed, pulling the permits, I think is a really good start to show that going through the city for the permits, and then hopefully, the design builder is going to consider and utilize as much local prevailing wage labor that they can. If it wasn't such a big and vital company, a company like Springer and Nordson and some of the others that have done so much over the years to invest, and you can see on Lake Street, they're putting back in in the Amherst manner, they're constantly investing back in Amherst, I've been around now with Chuck and others, watching Springer invest back in the school district, invest back in the city, invest back into the local community, and this makes it easier for me to sign off on this because of what Springer's done, and so I want to kind of throw that in there as a thank you for all that you've done to be a part of this community, and with that, it makes us easier to accept and to support and get behind, and you have my full support and I'm behind it, still would love to see that map drawn a little bit differently, but hey, this is a great start, and it brings in this building, and there's a lot of thoughts there as well, so thank you for answering my questions, thank you for coming up here and taking the time over committee and then this reading as well. With that, Mr. President, I thank you for the time.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Roll call vote please.
Mr. Bukavak?
Yes.
Mr. Goodell?
Yes.
Mr. Van Churen?
Yes.
Mrs. Wasilk?
Yes.
Mr. Winarski?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Janet?
Yes.
Motion carries, Mr. Bukavak.
Move to adopt.
Goodell?
Second.
Motion second on the floor to adopt, roll call vote.
Mr. Bukavak?
Yes.
Mr. Goodell?
Yes.
Mr. Van Churen?
Yes.
Mrs. Wasilk?
Yes.
Mr. Winarski?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Janet?
Yes.
Motion carries.
It's resolution R-16-10.
Item M.
An ordinance amending ordinance number O-15-18 to correct an error in exhibit A-1 of that ordinance and declaring emergency.
Is it 15-20?
I've got 20, Jim.
I don't know, does 20 know?
What's the question?
We've got 015-20 on the agenda and 015-18 on the ordinance.
Let me explain you. Again, to the Springers, council graciously vacated a little part of the Rest Lake Drive, and that was pursuant to the ordinance 15-18.
I see.
And then there, in that ordinance, the surveyor had provided the wrong name for the owner. Right, exactly, if you remember, and so, we had an amendment which was O-15-20, which corrected that, then, it was discovered that the surveyor made yet another mistake from the tax map people, there was a, on one of the bearings on the legal description, it should have been 32, he put in 23, and so the tax map people, I begged them, you're going to have to go through this, and they said, no, no, we want to have another formal amendment, and so that's why I prepared the ordinance, which is before us now, that would correct 18-20 to make the right, you know, verify the right name, and also correct the bearing. Actually, the legal description was correct, but yet the little map surveyor did get that wrong, so really what we're doing is substituting the map that should have been attached on 18, and so we're substituting that now, as it would have been there in the first place. Does that make sense?
So, this is correct?
Yeah.
18 is correct.
This is, yeah, yours is written as correct.
So, as I read it, it's correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Janet?
I'd like to move to suspend council rules that item 6M may be passed on its first reading, please.
Thank you, Mr. Goodell?
Second.
Motion second on the floor, suspend council rules that item M may be passed on the first reading, any other comments? Roll call vote please.
Mr. Bukavak?
Yes.
Mr. Goodell?
Yes.
Mr. Van Churen?
Yes.
Mrs. Wasilk?
Yes.
Mr. Winarski?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Janet?
Yes.
Motion carries, Mr. Miller?
Move to adopt.
Mr. Goodell? Motion second on the floor to adopt, roll call vote.
Mr. Bukavak?
Yes.
Mr. Goodell?
Yes.
Mr. Van Churen?
Yes.
Mrs. Wasilk?
Yes.
Mr. Winarski?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mrs. Janet?
Yes.
Mr. Janet.
Mr. Janet. Motion carries.
Ordinance O-16-51.
61.
I'm sorry.
61.
51, 52.
Item N.
An, a resolution requesting that the county auditor of Lorraine County pursuant to Ohio Revised Code, section 5705.03B, certify to the city of Amherst, the total current tax valuation of the city and the dollar amount of revenue that would be generated by one mill for the purpose of providing and maintaining fire apparatus, appliances, buildings, or sites, therefore, for the fire department of the city of Amherst pursuant to section 5705.19I of the Ohio Revised Code and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Van Churen?
Move to suspend council rules, so 6N can be passed now.
Thank you, Mr. Bukavak.
I'd like to second on a comment, please. We are, this item and the next item are both tied together a little bit, and we are blessed in this community to be having some of the finest safety services in the county, as well as, this provides them with the equipment not only to do their job well, but also to do their job very safely, and I think this is a great thing that we're able to provide for them, and it's a proud to actually provide this and put this forward to the city and to the residents, so thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Winarski?
Thank you. What month were you planning on putting this, were we going to go in May?
We're going to the first election, the next coming election.
Okay, that's all, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Roll call vote please.
Mr. Bukavak?
Yes.
Mr. Goodell?
Yes.
Mr. Van Churen?
Yes.
Mrs. Wasilk?
Yes.
Mr. Winarski?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Janet?
Yes.
Motion carries. Mr. Miller?
Move to adopt, please.
Mr. Goodell?
Second.
Motion second on the floor to adopt, roll call vote.
Mr. Bukavak?
Yes.
Mr. Goodell?
Yes.
Mr. Van Churen?
Yes.
Mrs. Wasilk?
Yes.
Mr. Winarski?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Janet?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Resolution R-16-11.
Item O.
A resolution pursuant to Ohio Revised Code, section 5705.19, submitting to the electors of the city of Amherst, the question of a renal levy for a period of five years for the purpose of providing and maintaining fire apparatus, appliances, buildings, or sites, therefore, for the fire department of the city of Amherst, Ohio, declaring an emergency.
Mr. Miller?
Move to suspend council rules that 6O can be passed on with emergency.
Thank you. Mr. Goodell?
Second.
Motion second on the floor, suspend council rules on item O, so may be passed on the first reading, any comments? Roll call vote please.
Mr. Bukavak?
Yes.
Mr. Goodell?
Yes.
Mr. Van Churen?
Yes.
Mrs. Wasilk?
Yes.
Mr. Winarski?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Janet?
Yes.
Motion carries. Mr. Van Churen?
Move to adopt.
Mr. Goodell?
Second.
Motion second on the floor to adopt, roll call vote.
Mr. Bukavak?
Yes.
Mr. Goodell?
Yes.
Mr. Van Churen?
Yes.
Mrs. Wasilk?
Yes.
Mr. Winarski?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Janet?
Yes.
Motion carries.
It's resolution R-16-12.
Item P.
An ordinance authorizing and directing the safety service director to purchase equipment through the Ohio State Cooperative Purchasing Program for the new citywide data center and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Goodell?
I'd like to make a motion to suspend council rules that item 6P may be passed on its first reading with the emergency.
Thank you. Mr. Janet? Motion second on the floor, suspend council rules on item P, so may be passed on the first reading, any comments? Roll call vote please.
Mr. Bukavak?
Yes.
Mr. Goodell?
Yes.
Mr. Van Churen?
Yes.
Mrs. Wasilk?
Yes.
Mr. Winarski?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Janet?
Yes.
Motion carries. Mr. Bukavak?
Move to adopt.
Mr. Goodell?
Second.
Motion second on the floor to adopt, roll call vote.
Mr. Bukavak?
Yes.
Mr. Goodell?
Yes.
Mr. Van Churen?
Yes.
Mrs. Wasilk?
Yes.
Mr. Winarski?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Janet?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Ordinance O-16-52.
That completes item six, move on to item seven, ordinances and resolutions, second reading, we have none. Item eight, ordinances and resolutions, third reading, we have none. Oh, we do have one, item A.
An ordinance approving the developer's agreement with Micah Properties and Victor Naradini for road improvements to Kreske Drive.
Mr. Goodell?
Motion to adopt.
Mr. Miller?
Second with comment.
Motion second on the floor to adopt. Mr. Miller?
Thank you, Mr. President, I just wanted to thank the administration, mayor, and Victor Naradini and Micah Properties for working out a real reasonable deal to get that Kreske Drive, hopefully, fixed, or at least relieved of such a distress of traffic right now. I'd call it improved, I don't know if you'll fix it with this, but we'll definitely improve the situation, and right now, we'll take all the improvements, and I do appreciate the way you have worked that deal and provided this relief for the traffic, so, I just wanted to make sure, I once again thank both those involved with bringing this and making it happen, so thanks again. No other comments.
Thank you. Motion on the floor, and a second to adopt. Roll call vote please.
Mr. Bukavak?
Yes.
Mr. Goodell?
Yes.
Mr. Van Churen?
Yes.
Mrs. Wasilk?
Yes.
Mr. Winarski?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Janet?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Ordinance O-16-53.
Move on to item nine, acknowledging the public, anyone here wishing to speak on anything, anything, carries. If not, move on to item 10, agenda request and committee meeting schedules.
Mr. President, real quick?
Yes.
Yeah, I just wanted to make a kind of...
Oh, go ahead.
First, I'd like to thank those who joined us, sent in, I don't know who's in the back, so welcome, you are?
Jacob Kramer.
Jacob Kramer, welcome to city council, appreciate you coming, you're here for?